I now call the June 6, 2017 Regular Council Meeting to order. Would council members please denote your presence by depressing your yes switch?
All council members are present.
Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on our cable channel 192. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair would entertain a motion by minute action to approve minutes of the May 16, 2017 Regular Council Meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on May 31, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco and seconded by Councilman Johnson. Corrections? Please cast your vote and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the May 19, 2017 Special Council Meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on May 29, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
I'll go move by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Corrections? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the May 22, 2017 Special Council Meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on May 30, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Walsh. Corrections? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the June 6, 2017 Bills and Claims as audited by Interim City Manager Becker.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Abstentions? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Thank you. All right. City staff received a letter of commendation from the Glen Rock Chief of Police Timothy Hurd for the assistance his department received in April 2017. The Glen Rock Police Department had contacted the City of Casper Police Department for assistance in the apprehension of an armed suspect that was likely in Casper. The Casper Police Department responded quickly and was able to locate and detain the suspect without incident. The vehicle used in the commission of the crime was also impounded. Further support was given in subsequent search warrants and interviews that led to a successful arrest and further prosecution of the suspect. Chief Hurd specifically thanked the following City of Casper staff for their involvement in the case. Sergeant Stephen Nunn, Officer Justin Price, Officer Josh Albrecht, Officer Craig Burns, Detective Tiffany Elhart, and Dispatcher Kelly Berger. On behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Casper, I'd like to acknowledge each and every one of you for your involvement in supporting another agency and for protecting all of us from potential harm. Please come forward so I can present your certificates of commendation.
Okay. Okay, I have to come up here. We need, well, you can go down there for me. Right. So the first one for Tiffany.
Thank you.
Okay, we have to smile at the camera.
So sweet.
Okay, so. So we're gonna do one at a time? I think so. We'll get them all very strict. I think we'll go one at a time and then they have to do a group photo being silly. Just some breakdancing.
I'm just gonna play yours out because you're saying.
I'm sure they have to guess from an alphabetical order.
All right, you ready? Okay. Steven.
Nice to meet you.
All right, you ready for this?
Yes.
We know I'm a dude, so here we go. Now, don't go too far for our funny group photo. Okay, there's yours. You ready?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to go under your arm, sorry. Good? Okay. By default? We have Craig. Okay, I think I get my arm high on you there.
Yeah.
Okay, group photo, come on. I won't make you do silly if you guys are gonna be that serious. Boring.
She normally makes people do group hugs, too.
And trust balls. Just right up your guys' arms. Price, right there. We'll do your trust ball. There we go. There you are. Two of these, right? One, two, three. C P D. That makes you smile. C P D. Excellent. You got it.
We have a rockin' police department. I'm proud of these guys. Okay, let's see. Please read the consent agenda titles.
Established June 20, 2017 as a public hearing date for consideration of the following two items, pardon me, the fiscal year 2017 budget amendments and the adoption of the fiscal year 2018 budget.
The Chair would entertain a motion to by minute action establish the public hearing dates just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the 2017-2018 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. Excuse me. I have two exhibits. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Joy Clark to Liz Becker. That document dated May 15, 2017. And exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune. That document dated April 7, 2017.
My Lady City Manager Report.
Your Honor, Members of Council, federal regulations require that the Community Development Block Grant Program is required to prepare a five-year consolidated plan and then also an annual action plan each and every year of that five-year period to inform our federal government how we are making progress on the five-year consolidated plan. The annual action plan that will be presented tonight is for the period covering July 1 of 2017 through June 30 of this next year of 2018. Council did review the executive summary of the annual action plan at their work session on April 25, 2017, and funding recommendations by the Council are reflected in this annual action plan. The City does wish tonight through this public hearing to solicit any additional community input, and any comments that are received this evening at the public hearing will be included in the final plan, which will be submitted to HUD. Two public meetings have been held to relay the information in the executive summary. We've also, our staff has presented, posted the information, five different public information locations, as well as in all 20 of our catsy and bus vehicles for the minimum 15-day public notice period. Joy Clark, who is our CDBG Program Coordinator for the CDBG Program, is here tonight, and I wanted Joy to share a little bit of the public input that we've received, as well as the document that was put into your packets last week. So, Joy Clark.
The comments that we got were included in the information that you got in your packets, mainly relating to more people looking for low-income housing and supporting the transportation assistance that the program provides. We had, I had 47 people attend the second public meeting and four people attend the first one. And the main, for those of you that are new, the main purpose of the program is to give low-income residents of the city assistance with housing or transportation, different areas like that. And we have different housing, different kinds of housing complexes coming up in the future that we're hoping the federal government will continue funding, and we can help with those in the next couple of years.
Questions? Councilman Huckabee.
Can you explain what types of housing to which you're referring in the future? Are they?
We have a couple different complexes that are older, and I can help with rehab. The CDBG Program funds can help with fire suppression systems, windows, just different things to make the building safe and upgrade them, as long as it's not operating funds.
So it's not necessarily new construction?
No. In some new construction, we can help with sidewalk improvements around the area where there's existing sidewalks to improve that, or possibly work with landscaping so that the tenants, even though being low-income, have a nice place to live like we all like and have plants and shrubs and stuff around their area as well.
Thank you. Councilman Hopkins.
Yeah, Joy, I'd just like to point out, we've got a couple things in here that just really helped the City a lot, and a lot of people don't know, but what we provide for transportation tokens, some of these people literally don't have a way to get around unless we could do that. And the money that we're putting into Last Steps Campus, I know that is a big campus, and we've put a little money in it before, but I think in the long run, it's well worth our money. Thank you for the arbiters.
Councilman Pacheco.
First, thank you so much for all the work that you do for the community and for the City, for us. It's very great, we're very grateful, I know I am. So, one of the comments that we received about the need for more subsidized transportation. So, are we seeing, obviously, and this could be just one of those dumb things in my face, it's like, yes, Pacheco, but is, we're seeing the need for that quite a bit more?
Yes, unfortunately, the...
And possibly, could you say why? I know I'd want to put you on the spot, Joy.
HUD has a cap on public services, and so that is why our transportation has a cap on it. Every year, we have a 15% of our total allocation is capped out on that. So we can only go up to a certain amount. The economic stresses on the community, which report just came out today, Wyoming is the lowest, highest in the nation for unemployment, and that's a huge contributing factor with the loss of jobs, you have no money for gas, you decide whether you're going to buy groceries and take care of your kids, or put gas in your car and walking, or getting subsidized bus tokens are the best options.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Councilman Laird.
I don't know a lot about this, but what does this cost us?
The CDBG is funded by HUD. It's all HUD-funded. This last year, we had $287,000 that HUD sends, we get reimbursed for the work that we perform.
And so we don't subsidize anything? Well, that's nice. You get a bigger HUD grant.
Yes, so we're hoping we're funded this year. We replaced a furnace last Thanksgiving, an emergency furnace replacement for a stroke victim two days before Thanksgiving, and that's the kind of stuff our program does that we're able to do for our citizens.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. At this time, let us those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the annual action plan, please approach the lectern. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor? At this time, let us those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the annual action plan, please approach the lectern. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? There being no one to speak for or against the annual action plan, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by resolution, authorize the 2017-2018 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Huckabee. Discussion. Amendments? Please cast your vote and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the ordinance for the alcohol ordinance changes pertaining to dispensing rooms. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the ordinance on second reading as amended by title only.
An ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Casper Municipal Code to change the requirements for restaurant dispensing rooms, remove references to dispensing rooms for various types of licensed liquor establishments, and to apply regulations to licensed buildings for establishments with restaurant liquor licenses, retail liquor licenses, resort liquor licenses, limited retail liquor licenses, bar and grill liquor licenses, permitted microbreweries, and permitted satellite wineries.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading as amended the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Johnson. City Manager Report.
Your Honor, Members of Council, this is the second reading for this amendment to our Chapter 5 Amendment to our liquor license laws. I wanted, for the sake of our audience at home, as well as in the room, to bring everyone up to speed as to where we are with this second reading. It first began with looking at the amendments at the work session on April 25. At that point, council began to collect public input on the ordinance which was heard at a public hearing on May 16. Council did pass the ordinance on first reading at that meeting, but in response to some concerns that were voiced here at the lectern, council asked that the ordinance be reviewed at another work session before bringing it back for tonight's second reading. The ordinance was duly discussed at the work session on May 20. Options for amending the ordinance were considered, including possible changes to the age restrictions of customers and employees. In the end, council opted to make only one additional change. That change applied to Section 5.08.370, which deals with the age of servers who are employed at licensed establishments. The change specifically says, what we initially had had in this amendment was to have, persons could be employed to serve alcohol as long as they are at least 19 years of age. Council, after discussing that at the May 20 work session, amended that to state that employees can serve alcohol so long as they are at least 18 years of age. So that amendment, or that change, has been added to the ordinance as presented to you this evening, along with a change that specifies that the ordinance would not become effective until July 1, 2017, which is the date that the new state law comes into effect. That would conclude the City Manager's Report.
All right. Mr. Rowland, you are up. Come on down.
Keith Rowland, 542 South Durbin. I remember from 11 years ago that in order to speak on second readings, you have to put your name on the agenda, otherwise you can't speak, and it was very important with the Brooks Annexation Issue a number of years ago that I was able to speak and we were able to end up defeating that. I'm not against the ordinance as written. I'd like to see a council member move to amend, and somebody else to second it, to get a straight-up-and-down vote for the public to see which council members support changing this to read 21 and over. It should be amended for a number of reasons. First, we have a potential future liability issue. Your city attorney advised you, in accordance with the newspaper, that you need to use 19 and over, because of the fact that over 18 could be interpreted a number of different ways. You have taken a different route, and that opens up a potential, let's say if someone's 18 years old, drinks some of the excess liquor, or mistakes, or whatever you want to call it, gets drunk, somebody drunk, gets in a car accident, causes damage, someone gets hurt. A lawyer that knows about this issue is going to sue the council, sue the City. Whether or not to actually win the case, they do have the foot in the door, actually, they probably have a leg in the door, to hold the council liable. You have your attorney, a city attorney, it's not like some member of the public advising, your city attorney advised you, this opens a potential liability. But why open up the possibility for risk? We need to make the age 21 consistent across the board, 21 to drink, 21 to serve. Under the new ordinance, we could theoretically have 18-year-old bartenders or cocktail waitresses serving liquor. That's insane. Now, some of the council members have said, you know, we know people who are 18 who will be responsible to do the right thing. I also know 15- and 16-year-olds who will probably be responsible to do the right thing. But the state law currently says 21 to drink. We need it consistent, we need 21 across the board. Part of the problem with regulations that people have is inconsistency of regulations. It's difficult to be compliant with, it's also difficult to enforce. If we make it 21 across the board, there's no issue here. It's very simple to enforce, very issue, very easy to be compliant with. It seems that using the age of 18 is just a subsidy to bars and restaurants who are unwilling to pay people a decent salary to get someone who's over 21 to work. There was a gentleman here before from somewhere in the restaurants, he says, "Well, I have a hard time getting employees," blah, blah, blah. Well, you know, if you pay the people the right amount of money, you won't have a problem of 21 and over. I mean, what's next if we're gonna subsidize restaurants and bars? What's next? We're gonna make Casper a sanctuary city so they can bring illegal aliens to work in the kitchen and make them pay even less? I mean, what's the purpose here? This is insanity. If it is to subsidize restaurants, we should not be taking that risk. If we get either getting sued, or we also have another problem, that's my biggest issue with this, is education. In Casper, we have an awful graduation rate, just over 70%. That's appalling, absolutely appalling. Now, alcohol, this ordinance will not directly impact it a great deal, but it's like a puzzle. You have a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here. You know, not everybody that drinks drops out of high school, but I would be willing to bet that almost everybody that drops out drinks as a minor, or drinks as a minor. And, you know, you guys need to have a reality check. People, when they work in restaurants, when there's overpour, let's say if someone makes a strawberry daiquiri and they make too much, and there's too much in their little blender there, you think that goes down the drain? They pour a little cup and they drink it. A mistake comes back with martini. Oh, that was supposed to be straight up, not on the rocks. Well, they can't use it. You think that goes down the drain? No, someone's gonna consume it. It is insanity to think otherwise. And you're gonna have people who are drinking, and they could be drunk and get into a car accident or whatever. For example, what happens if somebody is 18 or 19? They drink those mistakes, they drink those overpours, they drive home, someone intoxicated, and they get into a car accident. Someone's seriously injured or killed. I ask you, how can you sleep at night and know that what you did tonight may have caused that death? I urge you to amend this to make it 21 and over.
And Mr. Lubin, we went to 18 to mirror the State's changes for consistency.
Madam Mayor, that is correct. This came up as a discussion item at the work session. I think my comments are taken, have been taken a little bit out of context. The problem that we had when we had first worded it, it was a little, when we said at least 19, did that mean from 18 to 19, or 19 or older? And so we've reworded it now to word who are at least 18, so we know we're starting at age 18 exactly and moving forward. As far as liability for the City, I don't see that. That's gonna be in the hands of the bar owners who employ these individuals. The law is the law, they have to comply with it, and so I don't see that particularly as an issue for the City.
Okay. Discussion. Councilman Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My issue with this, and I wish I had the magic wording on it, is you've got, with this large bar setting, law will allow 18-year-olds to be in with 21-year-olds, when, as we read it, it's geared around dispensing rooms, that kind of thing. So if you picture a family restaurant, that's what we think about. What I'm thinking about is opening up that mixed-crowd option for an 18-year-old to be able to go into, well, we all know intuitively as a bar, instead of a bar and restaurant. And I don't think it'll be beneficial for anyone under 21 to prepare drinks and work behind the bar. And if I had an amendment that would cover those things, I would offer it, and the issue is you can't do it by license type, because oftentimes, bar and restaurants have a full retail liquor license so that they can cater. And no good will come from that mix, I don't believe.
Do you see a solution in that?
It would take, I guess we could take it back to another work session, you still have third reading on this ordinance. I don't know that we can propose an amendment tonight to that effect, because it's difficult.
It's complex. I mean, you take, there's so many pieces attached to it that...
I guess my concern is, Madam Mayor, to do an amendment tonight without thought, being put into it, could end up with unintended consequences that we don't even anticipate.
But if, given the time, there could be solutions that you may be able to identify?
I think it's gonna complicate the ordinance to try to do that, and I think it's gonna cause and create, in my opinion, some confusion in the marketplace as to what's legal and what is not, based upon the way the state statute amended the statutes. It's hard to, it's hard to work something indifferent that the legislature didn't really cover for us to do what Councilman Walsh is considering. I'm not saying it's impossible, I think it would take a lot of effort, which I'm willing to do, don't take me wrong, but I worry about unintended consequences by trying to draw the line between backing up without making this complicated tonight. We used to define dispensing rooms as the area where 18-year-olds couldn't go. Now, we define it as the entire building that's subject to the retail liquor license. And so because of that change, we don't have an area within a building to discriminate where you're 18 and older can't or cannot go.
Okay.
That's the confusing part, trying to do that, unless you go back to the code the way we had it before, and just don't amend it.
Councilman Laird.
So, Mr. Rowland, here's the way I understand it. I owned a bar one time, I owned the Wonder Bar back in 1985, it was quite an experience. And I've represented restaurant owners and bar owners. And, believe it or not, they don't want anyone under 21 buying liquor from them either. And I would address the issues you raised about liability. The City Council doesn't have any liability with this at all. The bar owners only have liability if they sell to someone under 21, then they have liability. Otherwise, there is no liability in Wyoming for things that happen in a bar unless you've sold to an underage person. And what the city attorney was saying was, is that the state statute has molded this statute, we're just following it. The legislators have thought this out and passed a new state law, which they do allow us, through home rule, to modify to our own use. And talking to some of these bar owners, what they do is they hire 18-year-olds to take drinks to tables. They do have busboys as well that are 16-years-old. I was 15-years-old when I worked as a busboy at the Henning Hotel at the Elbow Room. And we didn't steal drinks, we didn't get drunk, we didn't do anything. We, I think then, we made very little money, I hate to even say how much it probably was, but I think...
I, I owned a bar one time, I owned the Wonder Bar back in nineteen eighty-five, it was quite an experience. And I've represented restaurant owners and bar owners. And, believe it or not, they don't want anyone under twenty-one buying liquor from them either. And I would address the issues you raised about liability. The city council doesn't have any liability with this at all. The bar owners only have liability if they sell to someone under twenty-one, then they have liability. Otherwise, there is no liability in Wyoming for things that happen in a bar unless you've, you've sold to an underage person. And what the city attorney was saying was, is that the state statute has molded this statute, we're just following it. The legislators have thought this out and passed a new state law, which they do allow us through home rule to modify to our own use. And, and talking to some of these bar owners, what they, what they do is they hire eighteen-year-olds to take drinks to tables. They do have busboys as well that, that are sixteen years old. I was fifteen years old when I worked as a busboy at the Henning Hotel at the Elbow Room. And we didn't steal drinks, we didn't get drunk, we didn't do anything. We, I think then we made very little money, I hate to even say how much it probably was, but I think this statute is okay. There's a couple of things I don't like that we haven't addressed, and that, that is, I don't think we should have bar, allow bartenders under twenty-one, and I think we're going to have to tweak that at some point, the eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-year-olds, and even the bar owners don't want that. Various reasons not to have a kid pouring drinks. But to serve the drinks and to have busboys clean the tables off is allowed, and it all, all of it does depend on the type of liquor license you have. They're all, they're all different, restaurant licenses are different than bar and grill licenses and, and full liquor licenses. But in this time of keeping costs down for, for restaurateurs, it's easy to say, to come up here and say, well, just pay them more money. But everybody's operating on a budget right now, and eighteen-year-olds like to come in there and work, they, they learn the business, they learn how to become waiters, they learn how to, they watch bartenders, and someday, that may be the type of business they want to get in. But I think this council and this city attorney is very cognizant of protecting our youth. And, and you know, I appreciate you coming down here, though, in person, and giving your name and saying this, because I see a lot of things posted online where people use fake names and make anonymous posts, and they don't have the wherewithal to come down here and look the council in the eye and tell them how they feel. I'd, I'd appreciate people who do that, so I appreciate that you've come down here. But I've dealt with it for a long time, and I, I see our acting police chief back there. I don't, I don't see arrests for these eighteen-year-old kids in bars abusing this. The police department runs stings all the time. Sometimes there are people who, who serve a minor, and they get a ticket for it, and they get a big fine for it. And there's very little of that that goes on, really, for, for the amount of people that go in and out of restaurants. I don't know of any cases where some kid was working in there drinking and went out and caused a big car wreck. I just don't think it is insanity, I think it was well thought out by our state legislature. And I think our citizens are protected with this, and I think our bar owners, who have to control their own premises and make sure that these violations don't occur, or they can lose their license if it happens too, too much, the, the council can take action against them, and would if, if there was, with abuse of the problem. But I do think there, there probably needs to be some amendment somewhere on this issue concerning eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-year-olds tending bar, because I personally am against that. The other one is, Mr. City Attorney is, is the, the state allows bars to stay open twenty-four hours. We don't want that either. We want, we want these bars closing down at certain periods of time. And I, I don't know that we have talked about that, but I don't think that's in our ordinance yet, to get that in place. And I'm, I'm thinking, do we have to do something about that?
Well, currently, we've maintained our bar and restaurant liquor selling hours, have to cease at basically two o'clock in the morning. There's some exceptions on the, on the weekends, you can't open as early on the weekend, I don't, have them right in front of me. But yes, the state statute adopted twenty-four hours, we have not changed our, our closing hours at this point. And I think we're going to have some discussion with council about that, and what, what we refer to as Phase Two for any future amendments, because you may want to roll those times back even further.
Well, what I, I want to make sure is that we don't bump into those state statutes and then create a confusion in the court system as to which statute applies.
No, I don't, Madam Mayor, I don't think that's the case. Once this amendment goes into place, the entire code will reflect this amendment with the other provisions that are already there, which limits those hours.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Hopkins.
Yeah, there's a couple of questions for you, Mr. Lubin. This would still be at the option of the bar owner. He, he could make it his policy that he's twenty-one, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. The other question I had, we may have a second bite at the apple here with the conditions we may put on licenses. So that could be based on an individual license, and that's, I'm not saying we want to mess with this right now, but that's, that would be a second bite at the apple. And I've also heard rumors that the state liquor dealers and some of the legislatures are a little bit concerned about that language. So it may be a relatively temporary change in the law.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Huckabee.
Having not worked in this industry, I'm curious how the education of tips to waitstaff bartenders works, and how, if any, changes would be made having eighteen-year-olds in that position. I'm not sure, who would know that?
Wasn't everybody doing tips at one point?
Well, they get credit for it. If they, if they send their people to tips, they get, they get credit in case there's a violation, or at least that's the way it has been in the surrounding areas. But at this point, it just really doesn't pose the problem, because the, the criminal statutes are that you can't serve people under twenty-one. And if you do, and you're caught, you're arrested, and you have to deal with the court systems. So I think there's enough coverage there in the law, plus, I don't, I don't think it's a huge problem. I think there are missteps sometimes on these stings where they, they, our police department is very creative in how they do that, and sometimes people get caught. The truth is, I've given a lot of seminars to bars on, on how to avoid all this. They have to ask two questions, really, under state law. They should ask, and they don't, this is the one they missed, they should ask something simple, how old are you? Because the sting law says that the person has to tell you how old they are. So if they say they're twenty-one, the, the sting fails. So if they say they're nineteen, how much further do you have to go? But you ask two questions, how old are you? And let me see your ID. That will take care of the problem. And when I can get that through the thick skulls of some of these people that work in bars, because we're all brought up not to ask people their age, now you're telling these young ladies that are working, they got to ask this person their age. Just ask the age, and then ask for the ID. Because where it all comes down is people, they don't come in and say, I'm thirty-five, when they're nineteen, they come in and say, I'm twenty-one. So it's always right on the number, it's just, it's just easy to monitor, once the bar owner begins to understand, ask how old they are, and let me see your ID. That will take care of the problem.
Councilman Morgan.
Well, that really wasn't my question. My question is, is it required? And if there is an requirement, can we ask that it be?
Do you have an answer for that?
It, it is not required, and like Councilman Laird said, there is a benefit if a certain amount of the staff has gone through tips training, that if they were to accrue demerit points, they would, they would be credited back for it. Not required, a large chunk of the bars do participate, and they want a hundred percent of their staff, the ones that I've talked to, and I, it certainly doesn't cover everybody, they want their whole staff to be through it, but due to just rotational staff, maybe eighteen, eighty-five percent have gone through, and all the management staffs of the bar owners I've talked to have all been through it.
Okay. On to Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to speak to Mr. Rolland's comments that he had made. I know a lot of people, they see change either at a state level or a local level, and we immediately, you know, raise our arms and ask what's going on. But if you look at the rest of the states, Wyoming being the, the smallest in population of that union, a number of states already have or allow bartenders either eighteen, Maine being the only state allowing seventeen-year-olds not only to bartend but also serve alcohol, and they're the only exception. But apart from that, you have twenty states that allow bartenders to be at the age of eighteen. And Wyoming state legislation is, is really just going towards the way everything's shifting. And these are numbers from January of two thousand and sixteen. Many of these states have already changed, as Wyoming has too, to include it, or to bring their minimum age to eighteen. So I, I understand your concerns of where you're coming from, but at the same time, we got to treat these adults as adults, and that's what we're doing here.
Councilman Johnson.
I, I think that our bar owners are, are responsible. This isn't forcing them to allow eighteen-year-olds to come in and serve. This is giving those people, like Charlie T., when he came here and spoke, that option to have that. He doesn't have a bar, but it gives the option to have an eighteen-year-old serve a bottle of beer in his establishment. Like Councilman Morgan said, this isn't a new thing, this is very commonplace among the United States. I think our bar owners, especially in Wyoming, with their, the way our liquor laws are written, put a lot of time and money into their establishment and that value of that liquor license that they have. I would be hard-pressed to, to find any bar owner that's a twenty-one and older bar only to be hiring eighteen-year-olds. I don't see that even happening, personally, but I really don't see this as, as a big deal. I mean, it's still illegal to drink and serve people under twenty-one. I just don't see it being a big problem. And it's up to the bar owner, it's not, we're not forcing it, it's up to the bar owner.
Do you guys need this back at a work session?
I don't need it.
Because I, I kind of hear twenty-one to pour, is that something you guys want to discuss, or are you satisfied as is?
Satisfied as is, and as long as we have that talk later in terms of how we're going to work out hours. Surrounding towns that whatever Casper does, they'll most likely follow, so they're also looking to us.
Okay. So any, Councilman Walsh?
My preference would be twenty-one to pour, and then address the mixed crowd in the whole bar area. We've had places like that here in the past, where eighteen-year-olds can go in and mix with twenty-one-year-olds, and it's been very problematic.
I won't be here next week, but if we could just carve out a little bit of time for that discussion on the work session, do we have time? And Bill, does that give you enough direction to kind of have some thoughts in the back of your head on how that could impact?
I'll do my best. Also, I, a suggestion would be perhaps to pass this, and then we start Phase Two, you could fine-tune some of these things in the Phase Two with the hours and that. You'd have a little gap between the law now of eighteen-year-olds being allowed to pour, which is still leaving the bar owner's discretion, but it might allow all of us a chance to look at it. I, I hate to rush in where, you know, where angels fear to tread, and, so I mean, in order to get it right, is what I'm getting at. It's better to get it right the first time than to come back and have to re-amend it and try to fix it later. Because you're coming up on third reading, that's my, that's my concern.
So what I'm kind of hearing is, get through third reading, move to the second phase, and tweak then and there?
That's kind of my suggestion, but you can certainly make the amendment on the floor at the next reading, on third reading, we can try to put something together, it's just what you would like to do.
Would that work for you?
Say, I like your suggestion. All right, Mayor.
No, that's okay. Okay.
I guess, might ask Councilman Walsh if that's acceptable to him, it's kind of something he wants to see, so.
Well, I'm going to vote no on that thing tonight. But I would, yes, I'm, I'm open to at some point addressing that, that loophole. And I don't know if I can find an ordinance in another, I'm not sure that we're the only town in Wyoming that's, that's trying to work this issue, so maybe somebody's invented the wheel and we don't have to. I don't know, because it's so hard to script it, but...
It's pretty fresh, too.
Yeah.
Pretty new.
Mayor?
Okay. Go ahead.
The wheel's been invented, and guess where it's been invented, and guess who's probably going to be our next manager? It's invented in Gillette, it has a great set of alcohol ordinances, and Carter and Upier will be able to work with our manager and have this thing perfected sometime this summer, I would guarantee that.
Okay. No further discussion or amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
Councilmember Walsh voting nay, motion passes.
Please read the consent ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending section two point oh four, point oh six oh of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to regular meetings of the Casper City Council.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading, the consent ordinance just read.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Huckabee, seconded by Councilman Walsh. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the resolution for the closing on the sale of Fire Station Number Six. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution authorizing a quitclaim deed for closing on the sale of Fire Station Number Six located at two seventy Valley Drive.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Powell. City manager report.
Your honor, members of council, as a way of background, last fall, staff put together a list of some city-owned properties around the area that were currently truly off the tax rolls, and brought these forward to this body to get permission to do some current appraisals on the property and to get the properties put up for bid, which we did, and that went through the appraisal process, and then the bid process was in the early spring of this year. The bids were all due back on, at this point in time, four properties. And we had a public opening of the properties at the April seventeenth meeting, and of the four properties that had been solicited, two of them were directed to be moved forward with. And one of them is the one that's projected here, which is Fire Station Number Six. With the bids, we did publish the appraised value, and the appraised value for Fire Station Six, which is located obviously out in Paradise Valley, was two hundred and thirty thousand. The high bid that we received from Z Holdings LLC is a hundred and eighty-two thousand. The applicant did provide all of the required documents that were necessary for that bid process. Tonight, we were wanting authorization to have the quitclaim deed for closing on the sale of that property later this week. And again, the idea is to incorporate getting these properties truly turned over for beneficial private use. That would conclude my city manager's report.
Council discussion. Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everybody know my position on this. I just think, you know, we're not in a really big rush to get rid of these properties. It would be great to put it out there again, since we're already listing other properties that we rejected bids on, to try to get that number up. I think through more advertising, we have that potential, and it wouldn't hurt anything, so I'll be voting no for that reason.
Okay. Councilman Johnson.
Could you repeat the appraisal price and what the bid was, again?
Your honor, the appraised price was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the bid price was a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
Councilman Laird.
Bill, thank you for that memo you gave me on the law concerning bidding and what have you. I think we ought to set this one aside for a while. You know, I came down and watched that meeting, and one of these properties was sold to the lowest bidder, because the other guy that's bid more didn't have his driver's license handy. But it was a ten thousand dollars difference, I'd kind of like to see the city get the ten thousand and, and take another look at that one. And for, actually, for the same reasons Jesse's talking about on, on turning this down, the, the law allows us to turn it down, allows us to rethink it, allows us to see how we're marketing it, allows us to see how we're dealing with these issues. So I'm going to vote no on it myself.
Councilman Huckabee.
Thank you. I also agree with Councilman Morgan, that I feel that we should put it back out there and see if we can get what it appraises at. My question is, is has the fire department moved into the new station yet? Because the last I knew, they were waiting for the alarm system to be installed.
Has the fire department moved into the new station?
Madam Mayor, the fire department has assured me they will be out of the station on Thursday, and the closing was set for Friday, so...
So does that mean that the alarm system is installed?
It, it was installed this weekend.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Powell.
Mr. Collins, could you sit up there for a second? Since some statements have been made regarding this advertising process, and some statements made that we didn't do a very good job of marketing, nobody really knew that this property was available, could you describe what was actually done as far as making this known to the community so that we could get interested parties bidding?
Absolutely. Your honor, we're required by law to publish notice in the Star Tribune three consecutive weeks, which we did. Beyond that, we went above and beyond the requirements. We've kept a, a list of properties... We've kept a list of property owners who have called, inquiring about properties, and we reached out to them all individually. We did several press releases, at least two, maybe three, and all the media outlets did pick it up, K2, News 13, Oil City. There were, I talked to multiple reporters, there were stories, lots of social media. I also performed an open house at the fire station, also not a requirement, but because of the interest that was being shown by the public, we did make that available for the public to go through a walkthrough process. Fielded dozens of calls. I don't have those with me tonight, but I did keep track of all those calls that I did field. It was on the city website, and of course, the work session was a public meeting where it was discussed as well.
Thank you. Councilman Pacheco.
Quick, real quick. So, if we sit on it for however much longer and hope to put it back out to rebid, do you feel that we would make, we could make more? Is there a, I mean, if we, I mean, I'm just trying to compare whether we sit on it longer or if we, and I know you're not a Realtor, but, but I'm kind of just kind of coming out and saying, just trying to come to a better understanding, if we do sit on it, is there a possibility that we could get closer to the appraised value?
Your Honor, it's always a possibility, and you're right, I'm not a real estate professional. But I will tell you that I did talk to real estate professionals that looked at the building, and in their opinion, there were some issues with the building that required putting some money into the building, and that's why the, in their opinion, the bids came in where they did.
Thank you.
Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In looking at this building, it's basically a 11,000 square foot lot with a metal building on it. And based on the fact that we've got a good bidder, granted, $182,000 is not appraised value, but in my opinion, I think the appraisal was high. The bottom line is, I'd rather get this back on the tax rolls because we've got a legitimate bidder and a known development resource, so to speak, and so I think I'd rather get it on the tax rolls now.
Okay. Councilman Powell, and then Councilman Laird.
Thank you, Your Honor. Not understanding a great deal about the appraisal process, it seems likely that whoever purchased this building will have to demolish it to build whatever it is that they want to build. Is the appraised value, is that, are those costs deducted from an appraisal?
Your Honor, I believe the appraisal was based on the reuse of the building, and I believe that the high bidder plans on reusing the building. I'm not sure how much, they're gonna change what's there, but knowing the bidder, they do have other garages in town that they house nice cars in.
Thank you. I'm going to vote yes. I just think that this was a fair process. The bidder met all the requirements. It did come under appraised value, but I, as I've said publicly, I think it's very difficult to appraise a property like this, and so I don't know how to determine if that's an accurate number. What Realtors have always told me is that the true value of a property is what a willing buyer will pay a willing seller, and that's the value. And I think that's what we've got, and it's $182,000. So I'm gonna vote yes. And, and we need to get this back on the tax rolls. The longer we delay, the longer that takes.
Councilman Laird?
Thank you.
I wasn't criticizing how you advertised this, but I, did you put it on social media?
Your Honor, it was through the process of doing the press releases, it was picked up by K2, I know, Oil City, and Star Tribune online. I read comments on Facebook.
My point is, we didn't put it on social media, did we?
Um, with the press release, we may have put it on the city's Facebook page, but other than that, no.
I, I did run across a number of people who didn't even know about it, and, and so I, the thing I really don't like is that it's being sold so far under the appraised value. Now, Bob, you may be right, it may be a high appraisal, but I can't, I wouldn't just say that. I mean, I, I, I'm hoping we're hiring appraisers that are on the mark here. And what they do is, when they appraise something, as you know, they go out and they, they do the best they can to file, to find comparatives, although there aren't too many fire station comparatives. But I just got, I just don't like seeing so much sold for so far under the appraisal. That's telling me we either got the wrong appraiser, or the, on the other side of it, we didn't market it properly. And I'm not saying that, when I say market it properly, I can think of a lot of other ways of marketing that you haven't mentioned. And I don't mind getting the real estate people involved and letting them make their fair percentage if they have buyers, and they're, they're not gonna bring their buyers unless somehow we have some arrangement, and I guess that's all part of the legal issues of selling this kind of property. But, but my recollection on, on this one was there were two prices. One guy bid $70,000, one guy bid $60,000, and they took the one for $60,000, because the guy that made the $71,000 didn't have a driver's license. That's kind of how I remembered it. It seemed to me that if you've got the high appraiser, somehow you gotta work with the guy, get the right information, sell it to him. This deal on the firehouse, I just don't want to have problems with appraisals. I don't want to be on a council where somebody says that maybe it's too high or maybe it's too low. We've got to get an appraiser that we, is right on the money, so that I know, and the rest of the council knows, are we really losing money on it, or are we charging too much for it? Is that why it didn't sell? And I agree with Charlie, that willing buyer, willing seller. But it just, there was just something about this one that bothered me. I can't put my finger on it, but it seemed too easy to manipulate. I just didn't like the idea of how that could have been manipulated. So that's why I'm voting against it.
And Councilman Laird, what time do you have to leave tonight?
Pretty soon.
Okay.
Thank you for reminding me.
Anybody else? All right. Please cast your vote, and please record the vote. Dallas, did you want to vote no?
Oh, wait, I meant no.
Okay.
There you go.
Councilmembers Laird, Morgan, and Huckabee voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the resolution for the closing on the sale of 777 Bernadine Street. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution authorizing a quitclaim deed for closing on the sale of the 777 Bernadine Street property, described as lots 24 through 28, Block 2, Keystone Edition to the Steve Casper.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Johnson. City Manager report.
Your Honor, Members of Council, this was the second of the four parcels that you had felt we should move forward with. And again, this particular property is very close to our Field of Dreams off of F Street, so it is on Bernadine, 777 Bernadine, between Bryanstock Trail and the McKinley area. And this particular property appraised at $145,000. And again, as you look at the diagram that's outlined in yellow on your screen, we're looking at truly five lots. And River Valley Builders, who is the adjacent owner, business owner immediately to the south and to the east, did bid $60,000. This is the one that Councilman Laird was talking about. So again, appraised valued $145,000. The qualified bid was $60,000 on this particular property. And everything else, pretty much the same as what we saw on the firehouse, so that would conclude my report.
Okay. Discussion. Councilman Laird, and then Councilman Morgan.
Mr. Lubin. We had two bids. We had that $70,000, $60,000, and my mind is a little fuzzy, because I just came there to view the meeting. But it was, had something to do with the guy not having his driver's license handy, and I thought maybe he brought it back later, so it was all in order. But I didn't see anything in the statute where he had to show somebody a driver's license to have a valid bid. Is that, does the statute require they do that?
Madam Mayor, the statute does not. However, the property was bid per the direction of council, and staff prepared that as what they felt was a material aspect of the bid. It was in the bid package that actually went out. Some folks actually qual, or qualify, or, I'm trying to think, met the requirements, and those that didn't, didn't. And I did inquire of the plan if they considered that to be a material aspect of the bid process, and they said yes. And if they consider it to be material, then it, we can't overlook it.
And Your Honor, I wanted to add to that. In the scope, we did ask that the applicants all be of age 18, which was the requirement for the driver's license.
Councilman Morgan, and then Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I think this is a perfect example of how if we put it out to bid again, I mean, here's $10,000 directly to the city, if not more. If we put it out there along with the other properties that we're already intending and putting out for rebid due to the requirement issues, it just gives us another opportunity to say, look, we, we've tried everything, we've done our best in terms of advertising for this particular property, and we're trying to make an extra buck. It's unfortunate that the previous one is going to close this week, but here again, like I said, here's, right here, you could make $10,000 more, and we just went through a whole budget week on what $10,000 could get us, whether it's training or, or whatever in terms of assets, but we'll be voting no for this, too.
Councilman Johnson?
This appraised for $145,000 and bids at $60,000. So I have a problem with that one, because it's, that's 40% of appraised value. Last one, we're getting 80% of appraised value. And with the economy is now, I was okay with that one, but this one is 40% of appraised value. That's a little insane to me, so I'm gonna probably vote no as well.
Anyone on this side? Amendments? Please cast your vote, and please, oh, sorry.
Just queuing up.
Wait, I did it again.
Please record the vote.
With Councilmember Powell and Walsh voting aye, motion fails.
Madam Mayor, in light of the, this resolution failing, it was to approve the quitclaim deed and to authorize the closing, I would suggest an alternative motion be made to reject all bids for the 777 Bernadine address, so the record's clear that council has rejected all bids in this matter.
All moved. Second. Discussion?
Discussion? And I thought Jesse?
No, I was just going to raise my hand to make that motion.
Okay.
That's what I'm gonna do, if that works. I did.
And then Councilman Huckabee, seconded. Okay. Discussion? Please cast your vote? Yes.
Councilman Walsh.
Oh, go ahead.
This is to vote on the amendment to reject all bids.
We're just rejecting all bids, so it's clear.
Correct. Just so the record's clear, that all bids have been rejected, so we can rebid the property later, just for that one property. Yes.
Okay. Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Are you ready to be excused? You better not be late. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 11C1, a resolution approving the vacation and replat of lots 2 through 4 of Mesa Edition Number Nine to create two new lots in the Mesa Edition Number Nine subdivision, lots 2A and 3A. Item 11C2, a resolution authorizing an agreement with 71 Construction for the Landmark Drive Surface Restoration Project. Item 11C3, a resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with Double D Welding and Fabrication Incorporated for professional services for the Washington Park Van Shell Stage Extension Phase Two. Item 11C4, a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Central Wyoming Regional Water System Joint Powers Board for Design and Construction Administration charges for the PLC SCADA Upgrade Project. Item 11C5, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Full Contact Concrete LLC for the Second Street Concrete Repairs Project. Item 11C6, a resolution removing restrictions from retail liquor license number 21, Modern Electric Company Doing Business with Wyoming Boat Legger Liquor. Item 11C7, a resolution authorizing amendment number two to a contract with David Sid fixed income management incorporated for reduced investment management services. Item 11C8, a resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with Wyoming Health Fares for the provision of biometric screening services. Item 11C9, a resolution authorizing the assignment of Spectra Ticketing Agreement to Spectra Venue Management for the Casper Event Center. Item 11C10, a resolution to support the continuing education program offered by the Wyoming Association of Municipalities and Local Technical Services, also known as Leadership Training Services, and authorizing the execution of a contract for services regarding the provision of such services.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
And Mr. City Attorney, do we need to note that Councilman Laird left at 7:04 for the record or anything?
That would be good for the record, yes. I think it's, I think they've noted it here, but that's good to announce that.
Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item 12A1, rejecting the bids on two city-owned properties and directing staff to rebid said properties. Item 12A2, acknowledging receipt and, of and authorizing the inclusion of the fiscal year 2018 summary proposed budget in the minutes of the June 6, 2017 regular council meeting. Item 12A3, authorizing the purchase of one new duplex 7,000 pound forklift from Wyoming Machinery Company for use by the Solid Waste Division. Item 12A4, authorizing purchase of two new front-end wheel loaders from Wyoming Machinery Company to be used in the Solid Waste Division.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Walsh, seconded by Vice Mayor Pacheco. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Does staff want to be excused for the rest of the meeting, since we're to the public comment? I know we kind of talked about that.
I, Madam Mayor, I appreciate that. I don't know, maybe this might be a good discussion for the next work session and make sure everybody is in copacetic with that, but...
Can those guys, okay, yeah.
We're all shaking our heads.
Go home.
But I think maybe that, I appreciate that, but I think maybe the rest of the council would like to have some input on that.
Okay. Yeah.
With that, Madam Mayor, could I be excused for about five minutes?
And the chief has to stay.
Have a good night, Mr. Beamer.
We're on Channel 192.
Okay. Now the time, we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with council to come forward. Give us your name and address. We may not respond to personnel matters. These are referred to the City Manager. Your questions might not be answered, and we ask you to stick to five minutes. Good evening.
Woody Giles, 290 East Magnolia. It's me again. According to the paper, which might be false news, I don't, it says that the city might be having some financial difficulties, and you're considering staff layoffs and cuts, and, and now you have to go into the reserve fund and et cetera, et cetera. And I'd just like to remind you that my, what little research I did, that you get a certain amount of funds from the property tax, about 26%, is that correct? And I'd like to mention that, that maybe you want to look into the, whether there's any hidden money out there in this property tax. You gotta sign staff to look into it. I mean, I, just a little research, I know of a $3 million property in the city that pays $512 a year in property taxes, and if it was paying the same rate I was paying, it'd be about $21,600. so there's twenty thousand dollars, you, you know. There's another property, it's three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars an acre, and right next to it is a property that's eight hundred dollars an acre, and it's just dirt, dirt and dirt, side by side, flat ground, not a cliff. Recently, you, you, city bought some land for six thousand dollars and did a biathlon course, and it was part of a nine hundred and fifty acre chunk, and the assessor said it was worth market value eighty dollars an acre, so, there's some potential revenue if you were to, you know, investigate just a wee bit. And, so, and when I did a presentation here, what, six weeks ago or something, you said you'd, you'd look a little harder at some of my suggestions based on the, the sales tax projections, which I guess are in the tank, so, I'm just reminding you that maybe you can do a little investigating here at some point. I mean, I don't wanna get into the whole thing that I've been doing for years here, but, there's a lot of, and then if some of these people are actually paying same rates everybody here is paying, that might encourage them to do something with this vacant land, which was, we call creating a job, just, that's, I'm just reminding you that there's some problems out there, and I think you should investigate.
Councilman Huckabee.
I agree with you. I think that you came to our work session and presented information that was interesting, and then you graciously afforded us the time to work through some issues that came up that needed immediate attention, and have done so patiently, and I feel like, I would like staff to look into that and report back to us on that, because you bring up some valid points and concerns that I think all of us should be concerned about and want to get to the bottom of.
Yeah, during that presentation, I discovered that, you know, I mentioned to you that, that you had the most valuable land that I had discovered so far, and I just wanna let you know that I found land that is more valuable than yours, and this friend of mine's place, I just, he came over, I checked his place, and it's well over four hundred thousand dollars an acre, and it's called Brookhurst, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Giles? Mr. Morgan?
Thank you. I don't know if it's really a question, but I did speak to somebody that used to work in the Nitrona County Assessor's Office, and I was bringing up certain properties, you know, property taxes in this area is this high, right across the street, it's different, and it was explained to me that there's certain areas that they qualify in terms of a certain tax district and, and structure for that particular property, and then, of course, depending on how it is, in terms of, you know, is it R four, R two, or, you know, you talk about vacant land, but depending on the zoning really affects that too, so, it was, it was a couple months ago, so unfortunately, it's not fresh in my mind, but, you know, some, a simple inquiry maybe to the Nitrona County Assessor's Office might be more beneficial as opposed to staff looking into that for us.
Mr. Johnson? I think Mr. Giles has done his diligence on that aspect. This is a years in the making thing that he's been coming to us about, and, and I agree with Council, Councilman Huckabee that we should, we've, we've kinda, you know, invited Woody to come in and talk, and then forget about it, and then invite him back and then forget about it, so I think, I think now's the time we afford him that, the things that we promised him we would do, so.
Can I make another comment? Is that, there's, there's some oddities that I don't understand, I, that, you know, in Paradise Valley, you know, I thought was a middle America, middle-class neighborhood, and I was told by, by the police that it wasn't, so, and, and Mills is not, is not the high-rent neighborhood of, of the Casper thing, yet that land is appraised for a whole lot more than, than the land under the most palatial house in Casper, by a factor of four hundred percent. I find that just odd, you know? How does, it's, I mean, what little research I've done, it seems like the richest people pay the least, and the poorest people pay the most. It's just, I, I don't understand that, but, you know, somebody could educate me, but, anyway, anything else?
Okay, thank you. We could do that at a mayor, commissioner type meeting too, I would think, yeah. Good evening.
Keith Rollin, five forty-two South Durbin. Two things, I'm beginning to circulate the petition, if, for change of form of government. We need thirty-seven hundred nineteen signatures of qualified voters residing in the city of Casper. Does that mean registered voters? It means those residing in the city. We're gonna try to attempt to do registered voters only, and sort of have another sheet that uses the ones that have issues, you know, they just turned eighteen and something like that, to make it much easier for the city clerk's office to verify the signatures. The actual petition reads, the undersigned qualified electors residing in the city of Casper, Wyoming, respectively petition that the following question be submitted to qualified voters in a special election. This is the actual ballot measure what's going to be. Shall the city of Casper form of government be changed from a city council and city manager to a form of government of a city council and mayor with the power and duties per W S fifteen dash one dash one oh eight, who shall be elected by the voters of the city of Casper for a term of four years? It's very simple, yes, you know, yes or no? I had a number of people stating that they wish we would put in the actual statute in part of the question. There was two reasons why it's not included. One is, it's rather lengthy, and I think when people see a ballot measure that's real long, they think they're being bamboozled, and they're gonna be like, oh, no. And the second thing is, if the state legislature makes any changes to that particular one oh eight, technical changes, we would still be in compliance with it if we went through. In the event there was change, otherwise you're gonna open a Pandora's box, you're gonna have to go back and through and modify, or through some type of process to change, because there's about, oh, is it here, have it here, right here, and that's the statute. So there's a number of things that you have to change if they change that, so it's better to just list the statute, if they change it a little bit, we're compliant. And then you, on the bottom of it, we have a standard boilerplate witness thing that, you have to actually witness this, you can't just post this someplace, like at a grocery store and have people sign it. I'm actually looking for, sort of like a Ponzi scheme, you know, getting ten people who get ten people, and everybody gets fifty signatures, and you end up with five thousand signatures type of thing. The second thing tonight is, I hope that on your June twentieth meeting, you are planning to pull an all-nighter here. I think you need to make drastic cuts, and also possibly revenue enhancement. I think it's appalling that we're going into this with a budget deficit of reducing reserves a little under five million. Remember, you're assuming that the revenue projection figure is correct. Remember, last year I came here and I said that revenue projection figure is outrageously over a mile, there's, you're not gonna get that, and we end up, we're not gonna be using reserves to pay for the fact that the revenue projection was incorrect by, what is it, about a million and a half or something like that? What happens if we get that same type of issue again going forward, and we end up using six and a half million dollars of reserves? Again, I told you last year, do an A, B, and C budget, a normal one, a one slightly less, and one drastically less, and look at, also in combination with that, do a zero bounds, I mean, rather, zero-based budget, where you start at each one item, and you work at it, look at it, do we really want this? This is a high priority. When I saw that budget meeting last week, it was like you've never seen some of these things. It was like you never knew that, that the fact of the building permit thing has not been changed. You didn't do micromanagement, you assumed everything, you pushed everything to the city manager's office, we elected you to look at the details. I see many cuts in there, I, for example, eight hundred thousand cut for the Platte River. I'm sorry, we should spend eight hundred thousand dollars to reinforce the Platte River, because I'm, I'm gonna be very blunt, very New York now, some idiot bought property and built a house next to a floodplain. I'm not wanting to pay the money for that person not doing their due diligence, you don't build there. Also, the four hundred thousand dollars for, for CADA. I think that we should cut out that out completely, if we find ourselves in a legal bind, that we have to do it because of the arrangement with the county, fine, we'll go back and tweak it then. Right now, cut it. There's a number of other things in there, cut, cut, cut. I'm in favor of cutting five percent across the board for salaries, that's the easiest thing to do, so we don't lay anybody off. It's not like a drastic measure, it's not gonna kill people, but there's a lot of people in this city.
We've got five seconds.
Have taken budget cuts, that we need to do that.
Sorry.
We'll help you here all night, next week, uh, two weeks.
Got it. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? Good evening.
Blackburn, two four four two, Shumway Street. I just would like to echo on the tips training, I'd like to see that made a requirement. I know that legislatively, I guess, it's not part of that, but I would like to see it as a requirement, as I feel it's important, and that is it.
Okay. Thank you. Go for it. Come on down.
I'll have to come more comfortable than I was with people.
Good evening.
My name is Richard Weaver, I'm at one twenty-two East Midwest Avenue. I own Dr. Fermento's Beer and Wine Supplies. A little bit about my background, I'm a chemist, I've had a business here for eight years. I'd like to talk a little bit about the issue of alcohol. Alcohol is neither, like anything, like money, politics, is neither good nor bad. Interestingly enough, people come into my business, and I'm not selling alcohol, I'm selling yeast, I'm selling barley, I'm selling hops, and, you know, there have been times when young, young people have come in to my business to buy stuff, and, and usually, I approach the, I approach that issue by saying, are your parents, you know, do your parents approve of this? Because I wanna make sure that, and, and I think, you know, the alcohol education portion really needs to happen at home, and, you know, if we were to look at, and also, you know, there's also the issue about rules and regulations and governmental regulations, and how that affects the industry too. Currently, I can tell you right now that the state, in the state of Texas, there's been twenty-nine percent growth in the winery industry, that is the highest amount of growth in the United States, and, and, you know, I believe that, you know, rules and regulations do play a role, and not only that, but also, you know, like I said, the alcohol is neither good nor bad. I wish we, we lived in a country where, where juveniles could learn more about alcohol from their parents, and then it would be more natural, and the mystery would be left out, but unfortunately, that's not the way it is here in America. So, what I know is that I'm very thankful, I could tell you some really interesting stories in my eight years of business, and, you know, and I'm gonna be taking some courses on, or a course on regulations, and that's gonna be difficult, it's kinda like turn out the lights, the party's over, you know, because now, now we're getting into the government regulation stuff, and it's, it's just no fun, you know, because freedom is lost, you know, the American flag, you know, but unfortunately, you know, there are, there are reasons behind the rules and regulations, and so, you know, we have to take a common sense approach to rules and regulations. And as far as a budget goes, you know, I know, I know what it's like to lose a job. You know, I, I worked, I worked for Halliburton Energy Services as a chemist in Duncan, Oklahoma, in nineteen ninety-eight, when I lost my job, and at that point in time, Dick Cheney was CEO. Not an easy thing to do, not an easy thing to go through. But the other thing too that I've learned is stewardship, making use of the materials that are available to me. I just made a batch of root beer in my shop with materials that nobody bought, raw materials, nobody bought it. So I took something and I made something out of it, and it's a great product, and I love sharing it with people, and, because it's love. It's love in my heart, it's what I love to do, my passion. I love to make alcohol. I love the science, I love the engineering that's involved, and I also love to serve people, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak to council? Good evening.
Amy Kidd, four five five Milton Avenue. I just had a quick question, I didn't know if anyone had a chance ever to walk the bridge over the Humming Boulevard, the foot, footbridge?
I think it's fixed.
I saw pictures. It's in really bad shape, it's still in really bad shape. And, and I know that money's tight right now, but I, I'm not saying, you know, maybe go fix it tomorrow or anything, but just take a walk over it and check it out, if you wouldn't mind, I'd appreciate that, because it's pretty dangerous.
So we did make repairs, but did they just not hold up? Okay. I wonder if we have somebody purposely damaging something? Okay, we.
Did you see the last bucket? Did you see people working on it, fixing it? No, it's still bad?
Okay, I'll let you know what we think.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, with that, we will go around the table, starting with Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's, we're early in the month, and we had a long month last month, so, as you're all aware, but a couple things coming up that everybody, I hope they're aware of, and I'm sure they are, but we've got Nick Fest starting this weekend, I see him down there setting stuff up, so that's gonna be a fun thing. Looks like the weather's gonna be good, maybe a little breezy, and then on June twelfth, we have our annual O Y D awards, and that's gonna be at four o'clock down in the Lyric, and these are from some of the folks that have made some significant changes in the O Y D during the last year, and so we wanna award their work, and then, boy, if you guys haven't made the art walk, last week was a humdinger. That's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The College National Final Rodeo will be starting this weekend, and it'll extend all, all through the, to the next weekend, so if you're interested in some fun rodeo action, this, this is the place to be. That's all I have.
Okay, Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. As we get closer to the eclipse event, I, I, sorry. As we get closer to the eclipse event, I think, I, I'm, I'm assuming the primary goal for everyone else is the same as mine, we wanna get through it safely, we want things to work smoothly, we want people to have a good time. Tonight, we took a very small step toward making that event work and, and be a positive experience for all the visitors by approving a very small amount of money to extend the size of the Washington Park Bandshell, and the primary purpose of that is so that our symphony can play there, and our symphony has a concert scheduled, I believe, the day before the eclipse, which could not have happened with the existing stage, and so this is just a small measure, because the secondary goal is, we want everyone who does come here to say, what a great place Casper, Wyoming is, you oughta go see it sometime, and having people have a good experience in Washington Park that night is one small thing that we can do to help that happen, so, just, a lot of times, things are on these consent agenda, and people don't really know what they're about, and that's what this one was about.
Councilman Huckabee.
I feel like this last weekend was quite chaotic in our community, and I want to give credit to, you know, our law enforcement community all around that really put in tireless hours, intellectual and emotional. hours, intellectual and emotional time into that, and kept our community safe. There were several incidents that occurred that were extremely dangerous, not only to law enforcement, but to the community as a whole. And I just want to express my gratitude for everyone involved in those who did a great job, and each of those incidents was peacefully resolved.
Councilman Johnson.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Morgan.
Oh, boy.
Oh, gosh.
I got a list. So I was just in Gillette for the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, and it was also the 50th anniversary of that association. So it was really great to talk to other community leaders, whether it's even city staff that also attended, and to really get some other ideas on how they're dealing with this. You know, it's tough to hear that Rock Springs is actually not allowing fireworks for the first time, and that was only $25,000. That's kind of shocking, especially after you look at some of the bids that we accepted and didn't accept, and how much that means to other communities. I'd really like to start inquiring, which I will do this next week, once I get caught up with work, but other communities have apps, app-based with their city website, and that's introduced. And if you see a down stop sign or a pothole that's reported, and then that's sent out, that's alerted, then it goes right back to your phone as soon as that's actually completed. That's pretty cool, I thought. Also, just getting more younger people involved with council, I think that'd be great to reach out to some of the high schools and their student council, and maybe if they can come to a, you know, collaborative effort and trying to get a resolution passed, I think that'd be great for them to say, hey, look, you know, I presented this to city council, and they passed our resolution, or whatever that would be. So I'd like to get more involvement there. Like I said, more technology-based services that the city can provide. Lander, for example, is just about to get their 10-gig fiber into their network. And a lot of mayors throughout the entire state and city administrators, city managers, they're concerned, and they're really looking at what actually is the role of city government? What are services that we provide, or what are the needs that we have, and what are the perceived needs that we have? So I think it's important that we all kind of try to look at that, and as we navigate through the budget and possibly revised budget, that we ask ourselves that, and how can we provide the same services but as less of a burden. And... Oh, yeah. The councilman from Mayor, Mr. Rowland, he advocated strongly against a strong mayor form of government. He said it would be terrible to institute that here, the political power that that mayor specifically has over city employees and other department heads. He said it could be a negative thing. If you'd be willing, perhaps, keep the city manager form of government and have an elected mayor. But the best thing that he advised was the fact that all of us can direct our city manager to fill out their duties in the way that we would like them to. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Just a couple of things. I just want to echo what Councilman Hopkins said. Our 3-2-1 was wonderful. It was even a little rainy, and several people were out, though. It was not quite as crowded as normally is, but if you have not gone to it, I know Councilman Morgan has, and Councilman Powell's been out. I don't know if anybody else has in the council. But you need to get out there and see that. It's the core of downtown Casper is vibrant and very exciting to be a part of that as well. The other part of it is that I continue to remain very confident of our 18-year-olds in this community, and very confident of what they can do and what they're capable of, and a deep understanding, and thank you for coming, Mr. Beaver, and talking about that, understanding, having knowledge about that. And I've worked 20-plus years in prevention in the community, and never in my whole entire life, Mr. Rowland, have I ever come across that we've had that problem in restaurants. And I certainly believe wholeheartedly in our restaurant owners and believe in their right to run their establishment the way that they need to. So, thank you.
Extra thank yous to our city manager Liz for hosting an amazing Rotary Conference. I was able to give the welcoming and got to torture a former councilman for a few minutes, and I thoroughly enjoyed that. Liz's conference was so successful that they want to be here every year, so Liz might need to rejuvenate a little bit before she takes that on, but that was a pretty amazing conference. So I gave that welcoming, Safe Kids Day. I can be there Thursday night if... For the rodeo, if you can... I think I just need one ticket. You want to be my date?
Yes.
Perfect.
I'll put you down.
Okay. I think that covers everybody, all the events for a bit, so... Okay. Next meeting's at the City Council. It'll be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, June 13th, 2017, in the council's meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, June 20th, 2017, in the council chambers. The Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Thank you, staff.
By the way, Bill, I gave you a brief message for walking you back on that really old tone. It may be very...